Good evening and welcome to the April 7, 2021 School Committee Meeting. We are just returning from executive session, so we apologize for being a little bit delayed. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item of business is public comment. I believe we have some people coming in person, although I just checked and no one is here yet. So I will skip over this while we wait. There is one public comment submission by Eric Garvin, 19 Kenwood Avenue, that we have all received and read prior to this meeting. Item five, we have approval of items by consensus. Approval of minutes, March 24, 2021. Is there a motion? Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? That is unanimous. We have approval of an out-of-state field trip, Wilmington High School trip to Germany, April 15 through April 23, 2023. Is there a motion? Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Samaha. Is there discussion? Yeah, I knew there would be discussion. Is there a discussion?
Mr. Maloney here available to talk to us?
Yes.
Welcome. You're welcome. Good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
Thank you.
You're on. No. We were up to the discussion, so there was a motion and a second, and now we're discussing. So please share with us.
Is there anything you want to know? I gave the packet, but I can give you a quick overview of the trip, if that's helpful. Yeah, certainly. So the students of Wilmington High School have the opportunity to participate in a nine-day tour of Germany, engaging in meaningful experiential learning. Really, an opportunity, having engaged in it as a student, having traveled with students before, as a teacher here, it's really difficult to replicate that type of learning, particularly in studying World War II and the Holocaust, which I think we all can agree, seeing the news recently, looking at some of the troubling situations and numbers when it comes to Holocaust education. You know, we do a good job at the Social Studies Department here in Wilmington, prioritizing it, highlighting it. We have a great relationship with a woman who I traveled, when I did a similar trip to this as a student at Salem State, Janet Applefield, who comes to speak to our students. And last year, Mike Jones, who was the co-person with me organizing this, organized to have her speak to the community at large, to the library, but we couldn't have her come here, obviously, for COVID. But this is another opportunity to further that. And I think, as I said, it's difficult to replicate the experience of going to the places where this history took place, and it's going to be important for us as we continue to go forward, not having people like Janet around forever to further our understanding and have new people able to tell the story. So on this trip, we'll be spending two nights in Munich. From there, we'll travel to the Dachau concentration camp. On the way to Nuremberg, we'll visit the rally grounds and the documentation center, which does a fantastic job of explaining how the Nazis came to power and then consolidated that power before the war started. Dresden for a day, and then we'll end up in Berlin for two nights. The trip covers admission to a number of different locales, including the concentration camp in Dachau, documentation center of the Nazi Party rally grounds, the Palace of Justice in Nuremberg, the swinger palace in Dresden, the topography of terror, the memorial of the murdered Jews of Europe in the Vonse House in Berlin, in and around Berlin. So that's the trip. It's going to be a lot more detailed than that, but that's the overview.
Thank you so much. Thanks for being here to walk us through that.
Absolutely.
Are there questions or comments? Mr. Samaha and then Mrs. Burns.
I'll just say, it sounds like a fantastic trip. I'm really excited about the opportunity because I think it's really, really important. I think Holocaust education is something that should definitely be prioritized, and I'm really glad to hear that's happening here in Wilmington. One of my questions, and you might not have the answer to this, but because it's such a great educational opportunity, I wonder what the opportunity is for all students, meaning if there are students who have some sort of financial hardship, what would a family of a, because I think you said juniors, I guess at the time it will be juniors and seniors?
Yeah.
If a family has some sort of financial hardship, yet their student, you know, would really want to go on this trip, is there, what would you suggest they do?
Yeah, so in the past, we've had students in that situation reach out through the school counseling department, and we've been able to kind of rally resources. There's a lot of generosity in the community who have helped students travel before. I haven't led a trip. I've been a chaperone on a couple of them, but I know that some trips do attempt to do some fundraising as well. One of the benefits of having it two years out would give us some time to do that if students were interested. And I'm certainly willing to look into any and all opportunities for grants, things of that nature. I know when I traveled as a grad student back in 2013, the Wilmington Educational Fund helped me out, so I certainly will do what's necessary to help students out who really want to go but can't necessarily pull it together. And I'd say the other thing, too, two years from now, it does give an opportunity to have a more, you know, payment plan, more flexible way to potentially afford the trip, which one of the things that drew me to waiting till 2023 as opposed to attempting it next year. Hope that answered it a little bit.
Mrs. Burns?
Thank you. I, too, think this is a wonderful opportunity for our students, and having been in college and doing a thesis actually on AltSwitch and Dr. Mengele, it's, to this day, blows my mind just the atrocities that have occurred for years before the end of the war and Liberation Day. My question is, my specific question is, and I've read through the criteria from, is it educational?
Yeah.
Travel?
Yeah.
Okay. My question is, and hoping for the best, but always preparing for the worst, with regards to what recently transpired for last year's tour and the parents who, it was state and worldwide closures due to this pandemic, and the difficulties parents had in getting some reimbursements, and it was only after the Attorney General's Office got involved that they get more of their money back. What protections, only because we're living in that kind of world and I am, I'll be the first one to say that I'm hoping that it's eradicated by that point, but God forbid with the variants that have come out, what protections, besides the insurance plans, which have always been in place, I don't see them any different necessarily than previous student trips, what assurances if something like that should occur within the 45-day window before a departure? That's my biggest concern, and, you know, protecting, you know, and I think you would agree that finances for families, just to do something this wonderful and to give their students this, something like this, not everyone has the resources to cut a loss, so simply. So I just wanted to ask you, if you had inquired, what type of protections in a pandemic-related situation can our families expect?
Sure. It's a great question, and I do, I think, I have the general outline of the COVID policy that EF has in place currently. And we will, when we have a parent meeting, informational meeting, a representative from EF will be there, and that's certainly a question that, if it doesn't come up, I will ask her to further. But they do have a COVID-19 peace of mind program right now that allows the group leader, up to 45 days, to change travel dates, cancel the tour with each traveler receiving a COVID future travel voucher, and also cancel your tour for a cash refund of all the money paid to EF less $500, which is apparently administrative fees. So that is in place. They also have to further that if there is federal restrictions, theoretically, that could be the European Union or Germany as well, saying, "We don't want you to come right now." That is a separate, that is similar. I believe the only difference would be that it would be only $350, whatever the administrative fees of putting this all together, I assume, that they'd already put up a cost for that.
It might be, and the juncture is.
There might be something, yeah.
If it's within that 45-day cycle, which I think is what had transpired
Yes.
Last spring.
Yes.
That is significant because no one has, you know, I can understand administrative fees in order, you know, the work done to prepare for the tour group, but the amount of money that parents were looking at last spring was, and granted, it's on chartered territory. I'm just very, I guess, cautious and reserved to ensure that our parents and our families aren't at unreasonable loss to their muddies, you know, with the best intent.
Absolutely. That's one of the questions I asked as well.
And that could, I mean, it could happen in two weeks before departure.
You never know what's going to happen. We went back in, probably 2016, when we, Mrs. Tucker, another social studies teacher, organized a similar trip. We had to change the itinerary slightly as the terrorist attacks in Belgium. And so, you know, unfortunately, there's always potential things that come up. But as I said, as of right now, maybe it's because they didn't have a policy like that before all kinds of things went wild last spring, that they seem to have a policy in place now that should alleviate those concerns. They also have COVID policies in place, you know, as I said, I'm with you. Another reason why 2023, not 2022
Right.
is hopefully we're past this.
Right.
So they certainly have policies in place, however, if someone were to get COVID or be forced to quarantine, in which they pick up the costs of anything associated with that. And then, as you said, the travel insurance options, one that's required, that covers, you know, the kind of your basic, and then there's a separate one that would allow you to cancel for any time outside.
Right.
And the other thing I would add, with it being so far away, maybe not as critical, but any student who signs up in like our first wave of signups, if we're able to get this approved, we're going to try to open up signups at the end of April.
Good.
Anyone who signs up, you know, at that time, will have until the end of this summer to also kind of evaluate things, make sure everything's still looking good, we're improving, they could cancel and get all their money back by August 1st. So that's in place right now as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Raxdale?
I love that the high school offers these opportunities to students. I think that one of my favorite presentations that the school committee has ever received was from a group of students reporting on the trip that they had gone on, giving us a slideshow and their recollections from, I think it was to Greece. And so I want to ask that, will you come before us again
Absolutely.
in the spring of '23 or the fall of '23 and show us?
Be happy to.
Show us memories from this trip.
Yes.
Because it sounds fantastic.
Put it on the agenda.
Mark it on the agenda now.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Fenely?
Just briefly, I think you kind of answered my question because you said that assuming this gets approved, you'll all then pre-registration essentially by the end of April. So assuming this gets approved, this price for two won't change?
No. This is the price for this tour group, assuming we get that 25 number. The price could come down if we got, I think, 30. It goes to a separate level where some of the group charges drop a little bit. And then I said the max we have is 42, which, again, would drop the cost a little bit more as well. Some schools have gone with larger groups. I think that gets a little bit trickier, but, you know, obviously, you know, we have some time to work with, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for doing this. This is a great trip.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Great. Sounds like we're all very excited, and I appreciate your forward thinking ahead, two years in advance. I think it'll be helpful. And are you prioritizing 11th and 12th graders?
So students will be. So it's funny, it's the freshmen and sophomores right now, but students who will be 11th and 12th at that period of time.
And so the number of students is 25 to 42, and so if it were to fill up with juniors and seniors, that would be, but if it didn't fill up, would you invite?
Yeah. So what we can do, the other benefit of having this out as far away as it is, we theoretically could add students to this trip until December of 2022. So if we have 25 kids, you know, by the end of April, great, we could still add more students to the mix, you know, for another, almost a year and a half, which would be, again, potentially give younger students an opportunity as well. But hopefully, you know, we have other teachers who've organized these trips, and I'm sure if, you know, once we're back to normal, there'll be other opportunities as well for the younger groups if they're not able to make it on this one.
Excellent. Thank you very much, and thanks for being here. Do you want to stay for the vote, just to see?
Sure.
So we had a motion and a second. Everyone in favor of approving the Wilmington High School trip to Germany in 2023? That's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. All right. Thanks, everyone. Next, we have Warrens, G429, G430, G431, R220, FS46, 47, 48, and L71. Is there a motion? Mrs. Newhouse, thank you, seconded by Mr. Raxdale. All in favor? That's unanimous. Payroll ending 3/31/2021. Is there a motion? Mrs. Newhouse, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? That's unanimous. We have CB10. Is there a motion? Mr. Raxdale, seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? And that's one abstention. We have Warrens, sped 27 and 28. Is there a motion? Mr. Fenely, seconded by Mr. Samaha. All in favor? And that is two extensions. Thank you. Item six, superintendent's report. Dr. Brand?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. There are two items listed underneath this section tonight, but I will add one more as well, just to note, and that's the last day of school for the school year. But first off, item A, there is a memo that is included in this week's packet, School Start Time Committee update. As I, as members of the committee know, and hopefully members of the community, this has been an effort that focused on the possibilities of changes of school start times here in Wilmington. This really first emerged through the strategic planning effort, the 2019 to '22 Strategic Plan, and part of that plan and one of the specific initiatives was to explore a possible change in school start times. We got off to a great start with a terrific cross-section of representatives from different parts of our community, and we began this work in the fall of last school year, fall of 2019. Things were going along quite well, and the committee was working in earnest and putting together some good work and some good thinking, and then, of course, like for some of the other things, March came along and the pandemic hit. Since that point in time, I must absolutely commend the members of the committee, most of whom stuck with this effort. Like everything else, was sometimes difficult to get people's attention or schedules, but they remained committed to it, and I certainly can't thank them enough. However, at a recent meeting that we had with existing members of the School Start Time Committee, it became abundantly clear, and I think I could say this held true for all of the members, that at this point in time, where there's a recognition of whether you are a parent or guardian or staff member, or student for that matter, fatigue is present. Everyone's just trying to make their way through until the end of the school year. And their recommendation to me was that this effort, despite their central belief, needed to be put on hold, that for such an important topic, and certainly the next stages, and I do point out in the memo, that there is a lot of work that's been done, and it sits there, but it will continue to sit there. But really, the point that this committee's work was at was to next engage members of our community. And their collective sense was, right now, that's just not reasonable. It's not feasible to think about the possibilities of meaningfully capturing the attention of our stakeholders, really capturing their attention, and asking them to, you know, engage in an important topic that may impact the school system down the road. And so with this, I'm announcing that we're going to put on hold the work of the Start Time Committee until a future time to be determined. My hope is that we return in the fall, and once we can get settled, there may be that opportunity to resume. I just want to make it clear to this committee and this community that I continue to believe that this is an important topic. It is a goal, an initiative as part of our strategic plan, and so nothing changes that. It's just the time period right now just doesn't seem to be most appropriate. So I'm here to share that with you tonight. I don't know if there are questions members have.
Mr. Raxdale?
Just have a comment on that. So as the school committee representative on that committee, that I agreed with that determination, and that it's important to remember that the committee's work this year was still in mind with the goal of trying to make these, to implement these changes for next fall. And in addition to what Dr. Brand said about that it's simply, you don't really think it's realistic to be able to engage the community now in a serious discussion and a serious process of thinking deeply about the various options that we've been developing, that also, for the next school year, to not just be our first, you know, coming back, you know, full-time, hopefully in the fall, but that for us to be, at the same time, adjusting to new school times and new routines, that this was also not something that was in the best interest of the community and the students, that we want as much as to be normal and familiar next fall as possible and not be adjusting to suddenly, you know, everyone is going to school at different times, but that we hope that we'll still be able to push that work forward.
Thanks, Mr. Raxdale. Any other comments or questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, item B, DESI supplemental guidance for student groups and school events for the 2021 school year. As noted and included in the packet, there's both the cover memo as well as the information that is referenced. On April 1, the Department of Education released an update supplemental guidance pertaining to those topics. There are a number of things within that documentation, and again, like so many times throughout the course of this year, school districts, of course, are always included, have to rally and try and make the best sense that we can of the updates to the guidance and make sure that we are continuing to, where appropriate, abide by that. The document covered non-athletic student groups, which, again, strongly points to meetings that should be held outside virtually, to the maximum extent possible. Volunteering, still something that, you know, relative to the health and safety guidelines, really are suggesting that those things continue to happen if they do outdoors or virtually. There's limitations around gatherings, and all of this DESI guidance, of course, is carefully tracking that of the Mass Department of Public Health. Probably the one that has got the most attention, understandably, is specific mention of prom for schools. And I'll quote, as noted on the memo here, "Due to the fact that a prom is considered inherently high-risk activity, and after consultation with their medical advisories, DESI strongly recommends that schools do not have proms, and instead substitute alternative celebrations for seniors." This has caught the attention, I know, of many communities and some in ours as well, too, and I can certainly tell you that Ms. Peters has had already a couple of conversations with parent guardians of the senior class and students. I will say that Linda, far before this DESI guidance was dropped and was pushed out, had been exploring and had secured an location outside of the state. And so what I've asked her to do with the release of this guidance is just to pause to make sure that that possible plan can align with the DESI guidance. I think we have an obligation there. We obviously also have an intersection with the local Department of Health, Board of Health, our nursing services, and ultimately you as a committee in terms of that, your possible engagement here. So the plan is to continue to work with Ms. Peters, to come up with, my plan, sorry, to work with Ms. Peters to put together a proposal that she thinks can both be supported by our Board of Health, by our Coordinator of Nursing Services, that also aligns with the DESI guidance, and then bring that to you for an update, and ultimately likely, I'll likely seek your approval to, you know, once that's presented to you and you're comfortable with that. So we're working on that. Stay tuned. I don't know that it will be necessarily at the next meeting, but certainly I can tell you Linda's working on that right now. So more to come on that. And then finally, the third item, just to announce, I know that some are, there's growing interest in this, to clarify that the last day as of right now of school for this 2021 school year is Monday, June 21, and we'll make sure that we push that date out. And with that, unless there are further questions, that's it for the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Mrs. Burns?
So thank you for the memo about the new guidelines that have been handed out from DESI. I think you've answered a lot of my inquiry already, but my question is, with regards to the consultation with the Board of Health in Wilmington and our nurse leader, will the Board of Health in the community of which Mrs. Peters had held also be considered in that decision?
You know, I
Will, you know, Ms. Newhouse be in communication with whomever runs that community's Board of Health?
That's a great question, and I don't have the answer to that right now. I think that will have to be, that will have to be explored.
Appreciate that.
The current proposal, I can tell you, the current proposal, the location, rather, that was secured is out of state, which is not uncommon, but makes this, in my mind, a little bit more complicated
Mm-hmm.
because of that fact, so.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Samaha?
I'll just say, you know, I sort of cautiously in support of this. I think I was a little taken aback by the guidance, you know, basically discouraging towns from having a prom. I'm glad that we're at least, we're not going to just go along with the state, you know, under your leadership, sort of saying like, let's follow the guidance, but let's explore it, and I think that, I think that means a lot to the seniors this year and to those families that are really going to think this through and really give them, you know, we're going to try our best to give them that opportunity, you know, especially in a year when, you know, they haven't had many opportunities, they've missed a lot. So I think that's really important for members of the community to know and to feel that. I guess one of my questions as well would be, I know that it's, like, the indoor capacity right now is 100 people in Massachusetts, if I'm right about that, and with it being, you know, out of state, if it were to be out of state, and I know this would be down the line, but we would still be following what Massachusetts is saying rather than what, you know, New Hampshire is saying for their guidelines.
I believe that would be appropriate. That's my, but there is still, to be honest, there's still a little bit more exploration of this to make sure that we're approaching this with the, through the right lens and making sure that we have a solid plan that, you know, that can abide by what it needs to, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Samaha. I just have a couple of quick questions. Do we know how many students are in our senior class?
Well, all combined, it's around 250 roughly, I think. No, a little lower than that.
Take a look.
And then while, so I don't need that answer right now, but just, I'm just curious as we move ahead with this, and can we find out if the venue does have outdoor possibilities or do we know that?
That is, it does have outdoor possibilities
Okay, great.
is my understanding, and that was part of the draw
Okay.
of which they found this venue, so.
And I just want to put out, I do worry about alternative plans or unsupervised events that will likely be planned if we don't find a way to support some sort of a prom. So I don't, I would imagine students and will find other ways of doing things. So I just think if we can, any way we can get this outside or just other, thinking outside the box a little bit to maybe reduce amount of students in one place at one time with proper supervision, I think that
Yeah.
just, I would just push on that a little bit.
And I think it's about 200.
200, okay.
I just looked at an applicant.
Thank you.
You know, and just a final comment, like a lot of things this year, I just think it's unfortunate the way, not just the timing of the guidance, but the way that this guidance is crafted, you know, either
Sure.
I either allow or don't. And the gray, as we all know well, has been very difficult to deal with, and unfortunately, we're ending the year somewhat how we started, but.
It's a bit contradictory, though.
I think so. So.
It does make it difficult to make good decisions, and I think anyone who's a senior planning on this knows the risks involved with any sort of gathering, and so I would encourage them to think about that and take that seriously. And just one more question, does the school committee usually have anything to do with prom approval, or is it because it's out of state? Can you just?
So, yeah, so no, my understanding is that typically in the past, but this is an out-of-state activity. You do have a policy, I forget the reference right now, but there is a policy that you do have that does bring this into your domain in terms of approval out of state. And again, you know, and this is what I'm also exploring is in terms of, so there's that element, but then there's also this other element of if this venue is to be deemed suitable and appropriate be deemed suitable and appropriate, you know, we're recognizing, we're somewhat going against the DESI guidance, and how does that, again, intersect with Board of Health and Safety Guidelines? So trying to untangle those right now.
Thank you.
At, at that juncture, it does come back to the board for consideration?
Yes.
And I'm sure, not to, I'm sure you'd probably be presenting it this way, if we can get as much detail about the venue-
Yes.
And, and the structure behind-
Yes.
The proposal, that would be-
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, and just for the committee's sake, I think I said it, but, you know, I can tell you, if there's one person who's working tirelessly-
It's Mrs. Peters.
It is Ms. Peters on this, I can tell you that right now, so.
We absolutely know, and we do appreciate, she's, I know she's had many meetings and talked through this with students and families quite often, so we are appreciative of that. All right, any other questions or comments about this? Okay. Our next item is old business, the 2021-22 school year calendar.
Thank you. So in your packet is, is a, is a slightly revised 21-22, 2021-22 school calendar, and we appreciate, you know, the, the feedback. We've had, I know, a few discussions here, and that's important. I think that this, this reflects ultimately the, you know, the, the reason why the, the calendar falls to you as a committee to approve, and this is an important discussion as we try and set this calendar for next year. The modification that we made, after some further, and, you know, in hindsight, it was, you know, certainly was, you know, I think my, my error in bringing this forward, that was a choppy first week, a day and a half. We're trying to, trying to fit in a lot, as we've discussed here before, and it didn't make sense, and it, it doesn't make sense, but the proposal here before you is, it sees the elimination of that half-day on Wednesday, September the 1st, still leaving two full days on Monday the 30th and Monday the, and Tuesday the 31st for staff. And to answer, I'm sure undoubtedly what may be a question around, well, we've talked an awful lot about and had your support to have half, a half-day for specifically the support of 504 and special education distribution. That's not gone away, but after further consideration from the, from our central office team, we, we believe absolutely that we can include that portion of time within the first two days. There's many other activities that are, are happening or are going to happen through those two days, but we believe that we can do that. And so that's, that's ultimately the change that you see here. We've still, you know, we've, we've dropped the total number from the first version presented to you of the total number of early release days. There are still, I recognize, some sprinkled throughout here, but ultimately that's the change, and it's, it's here for your consideration and hopeful approval going forward.
Thank you. Thank you for that explanation. I know that was a concern, and I'll just, the idea that we'll be ready to serve kids well on the 1st, so that we're not waiting until students leave on the 1st to, to then continue reviewing IUPs and 504s actually makes me quite happy to know that that, there's time built in on the 30th and 31st to make sure we're ready for students' arrival on the 1st. So I appreciate that explanation. Other questions or concerns or something you want to discuss about this calendar? Mr. Rexton?
I think that in its current form, this is, I would say, the closest that we're going to get to how we have traditionally done the first day of school, and that to, to try to expand the number of days in that first week would either require pushing all the way in front of Labor Day, starting after Labor Day, or pushing the start of teachers to the week beforehand, which would also be a, at least a substantial enough departure from past practice that, that although our district has always started the week before Labor Day or traditionally has, not the week before the week before Labor Day, even if it's just at the end of that week. And I think for either of those changes, I think they're reasonable changes to consider, but that would be something that we would want to do with some more input and insight from our community and staff to determine how they felt about those changes. And so I think that, given, given where we are, that this is, you know, the best option that we have before us for the, for the time being.
Thank you.
I'm happy to support this.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Samaha?
I'll just, I'll just reiterate some of that stuff. I, I think the, the beginning of the school year, I, I really appreciate this change. I think it just makes a ton more sense. So I, I think this, I think this calendar is a lot closer to what I imagine as being the most beneficial way, you know, need for professional development and need for, for families to have some stability in their, in their days. So, thank you. Appreciate the, the work behind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. I think we need a motion. Mrs. Burns?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Wilmington Public School school calendar for 2021-22 school year.
Seconded by Mr. Fenely. All in favor? That is unanimous.
Thank you very much, everyone. Thank you.
Good work.
We will, we will make sure that this gets pushed out to families ASAP.
We know that this took some time. We do appreciate you going back again and again to make sure that this was-
Sure.
As close to what we were hoping for. All right. New business, item 8A, I'm going to pass over this. Move to item 8B, return to school update. Dr. Brand?
Sure, thank you. Just a couple of, a couple of notes to share with you. As you know, this was a, this was a big week on Monday. We saw the return, a full five-day in-person of all of our elementary students across six schools. By all accounts, things went very, very well, and a tremendous thanks goes to all of our staff in those schools, every single one of them who worked tirelessly to make adjustments, changes to the many elements, many things that, that needed to, some smaller, some larger in terms of welcoming back all students on the same day. Tremendous thank you goes out to George Hooper and his staff beyond just our custodians in the schools who helped out tremendously. Thank you to the Wilmington Police Department, who also were an expanded presence on the first and second day with some concerns around expanded traffic because not, not all students, not as many students are taking the bus as normal. And to our transportation staff, our food services staff, and the list goes on in terms of making, making that possible. The kids reported, and I saw myself, were literally skipping off the bus, many of them, and I think, I'm sure they'll be tired by the week's end. It's somewhat like the first of school, that has that feeling, and, but it's, it's great to see them back, and our staff are excited to have them back. I will tell you, just in terms of a couple of, well, numbers in terms of the, still fully remote, I thought you may be interested in this. At the Beltwell School, we have eight students that are continuing as remote students. The Wildwood, 13 in total. The Shawshin, 54. The Wuburn Street, 53. The North, 32. The West, 50. And the middle school, we anticipate 107, and the high school, 94 students. So we continue to support those families who have chosen for the balance of the year to continue to have their children receive instruction fully remote, and, and that will, that will certainly be our commitment through the balance of this school year. Unfortunately, despite the great opening, we, we did have a positive case in one of our schools yesterday that, that did lead to multiple students that are shifting into quarantine. We, unfortunately, to a degree, were concerned about this and anticipated that this could happen, and the significant difference is the, obviously the condensing of space between students and the fact that the Center for Disease Control's definition of close contact has not changed and still remains at six feet, even though we've shifted students, of course, as you know, to, to three feet. Our protocols are working and, and have been working for some time, and they certainly worked as anticipated in this case, and we're, we're managing that as the best we can. So, but, but certainly all in all, a great start for our elementary return. We are preparing for the middle school and high school to return right after the break on Monday, April the 26th. As members of the committee know, the Department of Ed has required all middle schools in the state to come back on the 28th. They have still not set a date for the high school, but I'm pleased and that we have the support of our staff and the readiness of our staff to be able to prepare to welcome back our high school students. We will be switching to fully remote in preparation for that on Friday, right before April break, and that will allow teachers to make final preparations for their classrooms to ready the welcoming back of our middle school and high school students for five-day full in person. And happy to take any questions on any of that, if you have, but that was the return to school update.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Rexton?
Just very excited that we got to, got to this day and got to the day on Monday, and have, can't wait for us to get to the 26th and get our middle school and high school students in, in as well.
Yes.
And I just wanted to ask one quick question. So the, the positive case that we had, the only, I think it's, the only thing that's notable, as you said, is that it causes more students to be identified as close contacts because we have not as much separation between students and the classrooms right now. But like other situations, this was not a case of school spread. I think the timing for-
That's right. Absolutely, absolutely not, and those protocols, if you will, broadly speaking, around contact tracing and the update on the dashboard, the COVID dashboard, all, all of those things that, in the manner in which we have been operating to this point, continue. Nothing changes. And I, so I appreciate you pointing that out. That is absolutely the case.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. All right. Item 8C, we have the first reading of school committee policies, so we should have those ready to go. A, we have the homeschool application. Thank you for including this memo, Dr. Brand and Mrs. Dixie, reminding us of where we left off. So we've already looked at the homeschool, the application and the policy, but there were some questions, and I'm just checking to see if there are further questions. You're good? Everyone's good with that? Okay. We have JJE. Oh, actually, should I prove those first?
Yes.
Okay. So we are, no, they'll go to second, sorry, forgot it. They'll go to second read anyway.
Yeah.
So the homeschool application, IHBGR and IHBGE, we'll move to a second read next week. Okay. JJE, co-curricular and extracurricular activities. Questions or comments? We're comfortable with those changes?
Good.
Okay. And next we have JEB, which is entrance age. And as you will see, we just reviewed the policy subcommittee yesterday. We were actually updating it from a 19, from 1971, is that correct, Dr. Brand?
Yes.
So we have updated it to match the MASC, and then did add some language. Questions, comments? Mrs. Burns?
So I have to say that I am thrilled to, to see it written, revised in, in this capacity, because I think it really speaks to students and their readiness to learn, and we need to take that into consideration. But I did have a question with regards to one of, how it was written with regards to, you know, the, the consideration of students and the age appropriateness as to transfer in special needs students based on what criteria? You know what I mean? I know that there's a lot that'll go into determining if a student, you know, at what grade level the student should, should start if, if not for kindergarten, or if they should move on, but I just don't, well, not move on because it'd be coming into the district, but I didn't know if there was a certain criteria that administrators would set up, whether it be a district assessment to find out what that age-appropriate grade level would, would be, especially for those students born right before the cutoff date. I, I'm looking for some sort of, I guess, language, some kind of specific criteria or through, I, I just want to know how, how the decisions are being based on, like what the decisions are being based on. I hope that's, I want to be vague enough and generalized enough to, to see by what measure we're making these determinations. I'm glad that we are making determinations, but I just, I guess I want a little more insight as to the, if there's going to be specific criteria that the district will-
Sure.
-lay down in order to make that determination, I guess, is what I'm looking for.
Sure. So I think a couple of things, first off, to point out, and Ms. Brayson mentioned, Dr. Brayson mentioned the specific age. This is, this is a policy that was in the policy manual that, you know, as the committee knows, we're, we're, we're working to try and make our way through the policy manual. Let's, there's some, some work to do, and, and this was one that was in there. Our, Ms. Walsh and, and Ms. King, to, to this point, I'm not aware if there's been specific issues, certainly during, during my time, of particular issues with this, with this topic.
Mm-hmm.
And, and both of those principals have, have, up until this point, been doing what they need to and felt that that was only appropriate to follow this policy. So I want to put that out there, and certainly, you know, there's no, that all being said, there's not been a time period quite like we're dealing with now, and this is an issue that is popping up in school systems, from my understanding, all around. It's, it's not unique just to Wilmington. The idea, though, of a criteria, to your point, to your question, you know, that's not been developed right now, but I can tell you that, seeing this in other districts, there are tools that can be used, quick, relatively quick assessment tools, and the thought right now is, is that we would pull together a, a small team, and that doesn't mean 25 people, but, you know, a small group that are close to those and involved in those programs, likely the principal, likely a teacher, perhaps a service provider, depending on a student's profile and need, and come to terms with a, a screening tool and process that could be used for both sides of town, both schools, and likely we, and Alice and I were talking about this this afternoon, in a possibly unified way. So it's, so it's not, so it looks the same no matter which school, you know, we may be talking about here. So we can certainly follow up with this, I guess, the larger point, but-
However, even if the language is based on school-based criteria or something to that, you know, I wasn't looking to have specific protocol per se, but, but that it's based on a variety of different input to make that determination.
Uh-huh.
You know, I guess that's what I'm, minor thing, but I just thought, it just, I just, it just kind of, I just picked up on, you know what I mean, just to-
That's helpful. Thank you. Other questions, comments? Mrs. Newhouse?
Um, I guess, I, I'm definitely more of a black and white person, and I felt like our old policy was more black and white and concrete, and we're moving, this new policy is very vague and leaves lots of room for interpretation, which I guess I struggle with. And some of the, the different issues that I see with leaving it open for interpretation rather than putting and saying, you know, to every policy, there's always exceptions. You know, if, if you feel like your student can't participate and enter, say, kindergarten when they turn five by August 31st, is there a date that we can have an exception, exception form and have the team, say, a team meet and, okay, they're not ready for kindergarten, they're going to go to pre-K? And along those lines, I feel like, you know, it's the school district's responsibility when a student turns three, if they're not, if, to have them evaluated if they're not meeting academic, social, or emotional progress, and to offer certain programs that, you know, we, we, we spend a lot of time and money on in our, in all districts. And if these students are not ready academically, socially, emotionally, are there more issues that need to be founded and services provided for these students, rather than, you know, just because their birthday's in August and they might be a little immature? And then some of the other concerns that I have with, you know, letting some of this happen is, are we going to have a building space issue if too many students, parents keep their kids from entering kindergarten, especially this year with the pandemic? As was stated in our last meeting, the Beltwells are already at- As was stated in our last meeting, the belt bowl is already at capacity. If we have all these students that chose not to enter kindergarten this year and they want to enter in, say, next year, are we going to have a bubble? Do we need to read district students to go to, say, the Wildwood? Do we have enough room there? And by allowing, I don't know how many students, but reading social media, it seems to be quite a few. We then need to hire more staff or we need to increase classroom sizes. However, if we're still at the three-foot social distances, you can't increase this class sizes. And so there's financial burdens that could happen. Sorry, I lost my train of thought here. So I just think there's, I like the black and white with having an exception to the policy and, you know, parents need to put it in writing by a certain date to go to the principal and the superintendent to be reviewed of why their student should be retained or not start until the following year.
I'm just gonna, so I think the one thing about the 1971 policy was this sentence here, "The school administration is directed to enforce the above policy without exception." So that alone to me says there is no exception to this policy. So I think, and I mean, at the minimum, we were looking, the committee, and the committee did talk, the subcommittee talked about these sort of things, well, what will the number be? Are there that many? And what Alice Brown-Legrand and Dr. Brand stated was sort of this, it's not like there's no rule now. It's, there are, there are exceptions and we need to be more clear that there can be exceptions under sort of extenuating circumstances. For example, a child didn't go to kindergarten this year, but now is age for first grade, has not attended kindergarten. So in our policy from 71, they have no, there's no choice, there's no discussion there. It's, this is enforced, you go to first grade. And so that seemed to be, we were like, well, that doesn't really seem in the best interest of children, so we need to rethink this. So we did match it to the MASC policy, but I don't think that means that there's no room to sort of say, maybe this is too, is this too open? Do we need to be a little bit more clear? I mean, we removed the words, or MASC removed must have, or like must attend grade one. I mean, so me, and I don't love that language personally, but maybe we need to think about something in between. Mr. Rexton?
Just to add that the, the intention was to, I would say, if there's one word that I think that kind of sums up the change we're trying to make here, it's discretion. That the intention was to create some discretion where there previously was none, so that it was potentially an option to deviate from this policy and not just have an absolutely rigid, you're five years old kindergarten, six years old first grade, and that there can be no exceptions to that. But at the same time, retain the authority and discretion of the district to make these decisions based on everything in its interest. And so, for example, that captures, I think, Ms. Newhouse's point, I think a very valid point about too many students in one grade. That that causes huge problems if we have this enormous bubble of students in a grade and that the district needs to be able to look at that and say, we cannot accommodate, you know, this many students in, you know, in our kindergarten class or our first grade class, which leads to, you know, opening up new classrooms and suddenly having to hire new staff. There are a lot of these, you know, implications, a lot of consequences from that. And, and so that was, what we were aiming at was to relax the absolute stricture that it has to be this way in all circumstances, but also leave the discretion with the district to make these determinations and not create, for example, some kind of right. That was at least what we, what we were hoping to do.
I didn't hear you, some kind of.
Oh, not create, not create a right or an entitlement to this, but this is something that the district could consider, but would still be able to make the decision in its own complete discretion and authority.
Mr. Smaha?
I agree with this, with what people are saying here. I really, I did not like the language that was the 1971 with the no exception stuff. That, that was, any, any sort of absolute language I really like to shy away from. But I think, I agree with what Ms. Newhouse said too. I think we need to find, what I would like to see is, when this comes back for a second read, maybe have some, you know, in the committee meeting, you know, have some discussion about what is some middle ground that we can, we can meet here. So that's what I would like to see in the next, the next round.
Thank you, that's helpful, thank you.
Can you clarify that a little bit, what you mean by middle ground?
Sure, it's sort of, it's like, I think perhaps, because like, Mrs. Newhouse was saying, but here's a certain date where it needs to be submitted. You know, you have to submit, you know, some form or, you know, something. So it's, it's a little bit more of a, maybe a formalized process and I don't know exactly what that would be, I mean, I think that would be, so it's, it's, I believe this is giving flexibility, but I think we may, might need to add a little bit of.
What's the process?
Yeah, what's, what's the process? What would they, what would a family go through?
Parents may request.
So it's, yeah, like.
Exceptions for the process by doing the following.
Something, something in that nature where, because it seems like, as you read this, you might think, oh, if I'm a parent and I just say, I don't think my kid's ready without any evidence for that, then, you know, they could, you know, I think that they could, they could argue that this policy would allow them to do that. But if we'd had some sort of middle ground that allows, you know, parents to be able to present a case, families to be able to present that case and have that evidence, but it also allows the district to also make, make decisions, you know, that it needs to make in terms of class sizes and all the other things.
No, I don't, just sort of like a petition process, or at least specifying for families what would need to do if you were looking for an exception to this. Not, I want my child to go here, I want my child to go here. Like this almost, this can, a little bit seem like, oh, I'm going to check this box, this is where my child's going, as opposed to, no, there's a process. Because typically, if you're five, you're going to kindergarten, if you're six, you're going to first grade. Here's a process for, and to be considered for an exception, something like along those lines? Mrs. Burns?
So, you know, think with the diverse learners, any, this speaks to students coming into the district as an entrance point, whether it be through early intervention or through other means, homeschool and just coming in. And I do think there should be an assessment or criteria, because I think it would benefit the student as to where the best placement would be. And, you know, some sort of that criteria, however you want it, the language needs to appear. But in, the section three of this proposal does state that the principal and consultation with the superintendent and an appointed committee will be authorized to make these determinations. So there is that flexibility. And I think that we need that flexibility at any point, whether it be a child moving into the district, coming in mid-year. That's how I interpret this. And whether it be five days before September 1st or not, I, you know, you know, that the child turns another age. I mean, I think, I think everybody should be eligible for that. And interpretation and discussing about kindergarten sizes, first grade sizes, class sizes and that note, if we have to open up class, we have to open up class. These kids deserve an education. And that shouldn't be the determination as to whether, what grade they go into. I mean, it's setting up a student to fail, so, I mean, and having experience back in, I think, 2013, if Mr. Rogero can, but we had 17 kindergartners enter into this district on, I think, August 1st. And so the superintendent at the time, Joan Bennett, had to create a whole new classroom and had to do a hire to accommodate 17 new enrollments that came in from a move, if I'm correct. So, so that, I just kind of, in the concern with regards to class sizes, I just take that as, as that, well, we got a group of students that we now need to create a new classroom and, yes, it costs money, but we're serving, we're serving students and their education and, but I do think that, and I, like I said, not to repeat myself, I do recommend a certain criteria of which to assess any child that a parent may bring forth a concern about grade appropriateness for their student.
I mean, I'm thinking, we have this kindergarten screening criteria. We also, I don't think that this criteria should necessarily be in this policy, but I do think something with, you know, parents, guardians may request exceptions to this policy, it does need to be added in item three, maybe. So we can, so what I'm going to recommend is we bring it back quickly to the, because I know that time is, is really ticking and families need to make decisions about what their plans are for their next year. So we'll bring it back to the subcommittee wordsmith a bit and then bring it back next week, hopefully for a second read. But if it's not acceptable, then we'll bring it back again. But that's, I think, what I would propose. Does that sound?
Sounds reasonable.
Reasonable? Mr. Rexton, do you have something else to add?
I just, I did have one other thing to add, which is that I like, I think that the changes that people have been proposing sound good, that they'll, that they'll be an improvement and will capture what we were trying, trying to do. So thank you for everyone for helping us get there.
Thank you for considering.
As far as the, as far as getting into the details about what specific criteria we'll use to make these decisions, I think that's something that we want to avoid at this level of the policy. So at the level of school committee policy, I think that this is sort of a good level of generalization and that once we get into actual district practice, that's, that's a different level and that we don't want to be writing that level of, we don't want to be getting into the weeds and getting that granular in the policy itself at the school committee level.
Point of personal preference, I didn't mean to create word for word the criteria, but I loved it that there is going to be a criteria so parents.
So like school-based criteria, something along those lines.
Exactly, but that would absolutely be at the, at the purview of the superintendent and the staff to create and determine what that looks like. And it may not be the same for all, but I think that initial interview process or, you know, I think that's all vetted at the superintendent and team level to begin with, but just so that there is a criteria as opposed to some kind of just discussion kind of thing. I guess is what I was going for in my head.
Thank you.
And actually, one last thing I want to add is that I think it is, and this is something that Dr. Brand mentioned, that it is important that we have a consistency across the district in how we approach this from school to school, which is something that has been, you know, an issue for a long time and that we have specifically written into the strategic plan as far as trying to get this kind of horizontal alignment across the district policy-wise.
Agreed.
Thank you. Mrs. Newhouse?
Just quick on that, is that my concern is where in Massachusetts kindergarten is not mandatory. For any parents, I mean, parents have their right not to send their kid to kindergarten right into first grade, but for any parent who just wants to on their own wait a year, I think there needs to be a process and a detail in here that they should get an exception. And that way they're not thinking, oh, I didn't sign my kid up until they're six and I want them to start in kindergarten and not first grade. Well, we should have had a process for that a year ago and not when they're already six to begin.
Can I ask you a question? Because I'm not, and maybe I'm not articulating, because I'm trying to understand that's, you would still want to assess the level of the child in that circumstance to make sure what the appropriateness is. So I'm, I'm just, and we in Wilmington have, and I say this only because we in Wilmington benefited from and still benefit from the full-day kindergarten program that we got, the grant that we got. So I think my, and I'm wondering if I'm, if I'm missing an aspect to it, because it would still be the same piece, because you'd want, whether it be kindergarten or first grade, that six-year-old, I wouldn't be looking at it as an exception or an exemption, but I think it would be a good basis to, of some type of assessment criteria to assess that student so at the very least, they know where that student is. Not to say it's not to defer them from not going to kindergarten, if that's, you know, plausible, I just, I mean, I just, I'm not, I think I'm not, maybe I'm not grasping it.
I just think that with what I'm seeing in the public is that the district isn't being given the right to see the criteria for the, for these students and to assess them to see which level is appropriate until it's already too late. So instead of, like a child's turning five in August and according to what we would think they would be entering kindergarten, the parents don't want them to, don't address, don't come to the school, don't say anything. Instead, the next year, they register for kindergarten, is that child truly at a level of kindergarten or are they truly ready for first grade? But the, but the parents want them in kindergarten and there's no questions or evaluation process done?
No way to capture, if a family decides to not enroll in kindergarten, there's, there's, I see what you're saying. I'm not sure, I'm not exactly sure.
I'm not sure I'm articulating it correctly, but.
But I hear what you're saying, that it shouldn't just be that then they are like, no, no, wait, no, I didn't want to do first grade. I wanted to do that, it does seem like the district doesn't, they're not aware of those chaos. So I, that's an interesting question maybe to bring back to, Alice.
Yeah.
I think that's an important area to think about. I also wonder if we can't create sort of this petition form by our next meeting, just some, something to think about what it might look like. Because I imagine we want to, this is going to be the new policy and there are going to be some families who are looking for this. We probably want to have this ready to go, I'm guessing.
And I, I do feel like family's input is important on all of this. They do know their students better than a lot of other people. But I do also feel like, you know, if their students are not ready for first grade when, with the age cutoff, you know, are there more issues there? Is there more the district needs to know about, you know, how, how, how are we finding these kids and meeting their needs appropriately?
That's a great point, thank you. I don't have the answer for it, but I think we can, we can come back with some input from Alice and her team. All right, and finally, we have JKAA, which is the physical restraint of students policy. That was, that was updated. Are there questions about this? Mr. Smaha?
Yeah, I guess, as I was, as I was reading through it, and I don't even know if it's necessarily appropriate for the policy to have in it, but sort of in the middle of the policy, it says, you know, each building principal will identify staff members to serve and participate in this in-depth training program in the use of physical restraint. I know in any training program for physical restraint, it's also going to involve all of the things that staff members would do to de-escalate a situation before it got to any sort of physical restraint. And I, I wonder if any of that language should be in the policy where, you know, just if, if families are thinking, you know, are curious about the physical restraint policy of the district, when they're reading it, to know that it's, it's, you know, the way you read it, it's kind of like people are getting trained in just how to, like physically, you know, like do the restraint. As opposed to, you know, in, in my experience with any of that training, you know, it's, you know, you know, three-quarters or more is de-escalating. And it's like, one small part is a physical restraint part of it. So I don't know if that should be in this policy. I guess I'm curious what other people might think if that is important enough to have in the policy because it just, it will, I think, give families in the community just a little bit better window into, into what is involved in physical restraint, that it's not just that hands-on part of it, but it's all of the stuff that, the de-escalation stuff that happens before that, it gets to that point. I guess I'm just curious.
Thank you, Mr. Smaha. Mrs. Burns?
So this policy speaks specifically to physical restraints, but it also speaks that a restraint can only be placed if the student is at harm to themselves physically. And they can only use reasonable force needed to protect students, other persons or themselves from assault or imminent serious physical harm. So there's criteria as to when a physical restraint can be placed. I do know that if someone's placing a physical restraint, there has to be a witness to observe the restraint placed. And I think, and maybe Mrs. Newhouse can, she has a sharper mind than I do right now, but I think there are only certain restraints, which I think is vaguely outlined here, that can be placed within, you know, that's, and it speaks to the state law as referenced within the body of the policy as well. But I know there's training too for staff, anyone, you have to be trained to place a restraint, I believe, in the district.
Correct, I'm just, I'm just curious, I'm just curious about, you know, whether or not it would make sense to reference, and this is, this is, it's about restraint, right? But I just, I'm curious if it makes sense to reference all of the things, you know, before the student, you know, as soon as a, a staff member sees the signs that a student could potentially, you know, become a danger to himself or to others. And, you know, you know, a trained staff member is going to say, okay, down the, you know, if this. know, you know, a trained staff member's gonna say, okay, down the, you know, if this series of events continues, this restraint might be needed. So I guess I'm just curious, do we want to have anything in the policy that says anything about the de-escalation stuff that happens before that? I, I mean, I guess, I, I guess I, I don't know if that's an appropriate thing to have in, in the policy or not, and that's, I guess that's what my question is.
Do you want to respond to just that, and then we'll...
I could, sure, and, and thank, I actually did speak to Alice about this earlier, because I knew that that was a possible question. So, so first off, the, with, I mean, this, this, this responds to the, the need for the district from a legal standpoint to have a policy in place for specifically restraint. Our procedures do call for teams to be in place, and those teams as part of that, those processes have de-escalation as a fundamental, you know, piece of the procedures that we follow. So i, i, if you wanted, as a committee, you certainly could include reference to that. This just really provides the parameters around the restraint piece itself, but certainly as a practical matter and as part of the work that goes on, our teams, you know, have restraint as a focal point before even getting to restraint. So, you know, it's, it's certainly something you could consider, but that's, that's ever-present in all of our schools and in all situations.
Mr. Ragsdale?
I think that, not, not quite in the same language, but I think that the, the policy does capture some of that when it says that, so this is saying that, that it needs when the, when the behavior poses a threat of assault and imminent serious physical harm, and then it goes on to say, and the student is not responsive to verbal directives or other lawful and less intrusive behavioral interventions are deemed inappropriate, which I think captures some of what you're talking about.
Okay.
And not quite as much detail.
I think, you're right, I think I, I, I might have missed that. And so I guess I wonder if, yeah, I mean, I guess, I mean, I guess that makes sense. I mean, I guess I was just...
You know, it's, I was thinking...
It was around the, like, the training, like, just that piece around, staff members will participate and end up training, so that people who are reading this are understanding that, that, that the staff members are being trained in physical restraint, are also being trained in how to prevent the physical restraint from happening in the first place.
There's other, I mean, so I, and I agree, when I read it the first time, I said, ooh, there's nothing about de-escalation, anyone who's been through that training knows that that's the, really, the majority of, of those trainings. But there's also sort of the tension reduction, and then there's the establishing report, none of that's in here, and then I'm just like, wait a minute, this is just about physical restraint, so, but there's nothing else in the policy, that really talks about de-escalation. So it's interesting, because it's almost like, if you're looking at it, I see what you're saying, if you're looking at it as a, as a family, or you're, and you're like, oh, this, why is this here, but there's nothing about de-escalation. So I don't know if that means we add that term in here, or is that almost, is that another policy that we, we think about adding that goes just before this? It's not in the MA, it's not in MASCs either, but maybe that's something we consider adding. But I think by the time we're, we're looking at physical restraint, the de-escalation techniques haven't worked, so this is where we are.
Well, the, the other thing that you could consider is, is something along the lines of, the, the principal is responsible for, you know, building-based teams that, that specifically reference, and, and part of their, part of their oversight includes de-escalation. I mean, you could get into it that way if you wanted to reference it, I suppose.
Mrs. Burns?
All right, maybe throw this out at you, make it even simpler, if there was an opening sentence or two, saying in situations where de-escalation techniques and other non-physical techniques are not, you know, I'm just, are not, or have been exhausted, you know, this is, it's sort of like a small introduction to the, the rest of the policy to capture that, that piece.
I think that's helpful. So why don't we, we can bring this back to, to Alice, and just see if there's just some wording we can do in one of those first two sentences? I think that would be helpful. Are there any other que, yeah?
Well, I, I just, just, I, I, I always, I think it would be, I, I guess what I'm really thinking about more so is the, the sections on how staff are trained, and I don't know if it should be, it should be included in, you know, in the, in the use of, you know, de-escalation and physical, you know, something, something along those lines. I don't know, I mean, the committee can have that discussion.
Okay.
I'll, I'll be curious as to what, as to what they...
Thank you for that, we'll bring it back, we'll bring it back to you next week. All right. Okay, item nine, any subcommittee reports? Is that a hand? Mrs. Newhouse?
Um, I just, I was looking up the date here. The CPAC is having a basic rates workshop next Thursday, the 15th, at seven o'clock. The Office of Student Support Service did send out an email to all parents who receive services to sign up for this. It is a workshop that's being presented by the Federation for Children with Special Needs. It's a great workshop for anyone who has not attended one before. Even if you have, there's always great new information, so I really encourage parents to sign up if they can.
Thank you very much. Any other subcommittee reports?
If we wanted to talk about the family outreach.
Oh, yes.
Subcommittee...
Please, please do.
That, that we, that we held last week.
Yeah, I've been in so many meetings, I can't remember when they've all happened. Yes, Mr. Smaha, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So...
Actually, I'll pull up the minutes, but...
So, yeah, so, I mean, I'll just, just quickly, just to let the, just the committee know that the family and outreach committee met last week, last week.
Yeah, I think so.
And we invited the, the three community members who were here from, who had the proposal for the sort of district-wide, school, parent, committee, whatever we're calling it. And we had some, we had some really good discussion, and sort of, we were able to answer some of their questions, provide them with some feedback, and provide them with some, I think, some structure, and to give them a little insight into, you know, some of the, the things that we were just thinking about and concerned about as a committee, and, and what this might mean going forward. I don't know if, if Joe or Jennifer want to add to that?
Sure, I will add that their first meeting is tomorrow evening, a working group. I do believe they've assembled their, their team based, I think all the volunteers are a part of that team, so they will meet, and then they will come back to us, we've already scheduled that meeting, did you just say that? I was looking for the minutes, I'm sorry. And they'll report back to us in May, I believe, and then we will report back to, to all of you and possibly invite them back in again, if it seems like the next, the next step. And it was, it was a good discussion, and I think they have agenda items, and they're gonna sort of start with their norms and, and talk through some of the, the issues and concerns, and then bring back to us some, some ideas that we can consider. Did I miss anything, Mrs. Newhouse?
No.
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Smaha. Anything else? Any other subcommittee reports? Correspondence?
And then this evening?
Thank you. Future school committee dates, next week? Next week? Yeah, that is next week, one week from tonight, we'll be back. April 24th, we have our annual town election, that is obviously eight to eight. If you haven't had a chance to watch the, the forum, please do so. April 28th is our regular session meeting. May 1st, annual town meeting. I'm gonna, a tentative date, a tentative date?
No.
Yes?
Yeah, sure.
T tentative date for the high school prom is May 13th. June 4th is scholarship night for Class of 21, and June 6th is graduation at 1:00 PM for Class of 2021. All right, and so, we need to return, we're gonna return to executive session. And so I will read, I'm looking at you. The Wilmington, no, my, journeying this public, no, moving into...
I think we move to adjourn into executive session.
Move to enter into executive session, to which we will not return. All right, the Wilmington School Committee will enter into executive session pursuant to MGL-C30AS 21A23 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Unit A negotiations, cafeteria employees association negotiations, return to full in-person memorandum of agreement, and the superintendent contract. The Wilmington School Committee will not return to regular session following the executive session. Mrs. Newhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Fenely?
Yes.
Mr. Smaha?
Yes.
Mrs. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Ragsdale?
Yes.
Mrs. Bryson?
Yes.
All right, good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.